Dealing with our Planning and Development Services. We've got several items on the agenda for today. Just to let everybody know, we've got two commissioners that are not present today. Commissioner Nepper is out of county. Commissioner Jones is not here because of her husband's bad health condition, so she's with him in the hospital. So it'll be up to the three of us to address the issues that come before us today. I ask anybody that has any electronic devices to please silence them at this time. If you have to carry on a conversation with your neighbor, I ask you to take it out into the hallway so it doesn't disrupt the rest of the meeting. There's, I believe, three that we'll be continuing today. We'll announce them in just a minute. And there's also realignment of one of the items that's on the agenda. One's at, item number three on the agenda, at their request, is being moved to the end of the agenda to allow these others to go on and everybody can leave without having to sit through seven other presentations, because this one here, we anticipate, is going to take a little time. So we're going to make those changes. Kristin, I think you want to make an announcement right for the ones that are going to be continued?
Yes, sir. We do need to continue a few of these. That's going to be item number one, the Stonegate subdivision plat. Item number two, the Blue Mountain Beach Industrial Park, Phase Two replat. Item number seven, Churchill Oaks, Phase One replat. And item number nine, Beachside Estates plat. Request to continue all of those to the August 23 meeting.
Okay, so we got a total of four?
That's correct.
Hang on a minute. Go ahead. I thought it was. So Stonegate's supposed to be heard. That's fine.
Sorry. It says on here, "Request to continue," so I guess we're not...
Okay.
Do you have your assigned mile off? Okay.
Okay. So we've got items number two, seven, and nine is asked for a continuous August 23rd. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, Ms. Sid.
All of the items on today's agenda are quasi-c judicial land use items, so anyone who anticipates testifying on any of these items, if you would, please stand at this time and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth? Thank you. Whenever you come forward, if you would, please state that you've been sworn in and state your full name for the record. Have any of the commissioners had any ex parte communications on any of these items?
Yes.
Would those ex parte communications influence your decision making in any way?
No.
Okay. And have the three of you turned in your forms with the clerk?
Yes.
Okay. All right, with that, I think we're ready to proceed.
Okay, item number one would be Stonegate subdivision plat. Ms. Kristin?
Okay, commissioners, Tim is not here, so I'm going to go ahead and handle this one. This is a flat application submitted by Interlight Engineering on behalf of D.O. Horton, a request approval of 69 single-family lots on 19.63 acres, and this is located on West Hewitt Road.
My name is David Smith. I'm with Interlight Engineering, and I have been sworn in. We're before you for the plat of Stonegate.
Hang on, David. Can we get the volume up on that? We have a little difficulty.
It's all right. Is that better?
You may have to talk directly.
I'll get closer.
There you go.
We're before you for Stonegate subdivision, which is a proposed 69-lot, single-family residential subdivision. All of the infrastructure has been constructed consistent with the approved development order and has been certified by Walton County, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Staff have any comments they want to make?
We just want to request that the staff report be entered into the record.
So moved. Okay, any questions from the board?
I don't have any.
Okay. Is there any public comment concerning this project? Seeing none, it's the board's pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number two was continued. Number three has been moved to the back of the agenda. Item number four, the Blake at Miramar Beach Senior Living Facility. Okay, Mr. Bob, go ahead.
Good morning. I'll be filling in for Tim today. Request to approve by final order, project number 1701-50136. It's being reviewed by Tim Brown. This is a major development order application submitted by the Phineas Design Group, P.C. on behalf of First Citizen Bank and Trust Company, requesting approval to develop a 115,000 square feet assisted living and memory care facility with associated improvements on 10.61 plus or minus acres with a future land use of coastal center mixed use. The project is located at the northeast corner of Ponstee Zone in U.S. Highway 98 West and is identified by parcel number posted in your staff report. Staff would like to enter the staff report into record, please.
So moved.
And the applicant is here, so I will turn the applicant over for any questions you may have.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good morning. Michael Fitz, F.I.T.T.Z., been sworn in. I represent Arrive Architecture Group, so we're the architect on a project. As you said, 115,000 square foot assisted living and memory care. We do have the, just a watercolor render in here, the final look at product for you today. Also here have Vincent Orlando with the Plan and Design Group. He's our civil engineer, landscape. And then we also have representatives of the owner and the contractor here this morning. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I was advised that y'all agreed to give a 50-foot right-of-way along Ponstee, on Ponstee, Hion?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right. I can't remember if part of that 50-foot agreement was to, they were going to construct that, or was that just giving us access to put it in at a later date?
So we were, we were under the, I talked to Tim Brown yesterday. We were under the assumption that the right-of-way was to be dedicated before a CO was issued.
Right.
And then the road would be under construction at a later date.
Okay.
My name is Vincent Orlando with the Plan and Design Group.
And you were sworn in?
I've been sworn in.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the applicant? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next one up is Palm Court Subdivision. Mr. Bob?
Mr. Chair, this is a request to approve by final order, project number MAJ 1800008. Is being reviewed by myself. This is a major development order application submitted by O'Connell and Associates Consulting Engineers, OLC, on behalf of SAP Investments, requesting approval to develop a five-lot, single-family subdivision on 1.23 plus or minus acres with a future land use of neighborhood infill. The project is located on West Magnolia Lane and is identified by the parcel number in your staff reports. Staff would like to enter this staff report in record, please.
So moved.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to the applicant for any questions you may have.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is John Nash, N.A.S.H. I've been sworn. I'm with O'Connell Associates. We're the agent for this project and the engineer. This is a five-lot subdivision shown over here. It's in the southeast corner of the county on Walton Magnolia Lane. This staff didn't mention this, but this project did go before the zoning board adjustments and requested and received two variances regarding stormwater that I need to explain to y'all a little bit. But it's a fairly standard five-lot subdivision down there. What makes it interesting is some issue they've had in that area regarding flooding and staging water in that area. So if y'all will indulge me for a moment, I'll try to explain what the situation is and how we're at. Like I said, we requested two variances. I'll explain those in just a moment, but this project is, it's not on the beach, it is immediately behind it. There's one lot between this subdivision and the beach, and it is defined by Walton County as being in a closed basin. Because it's a closed basin, we're required to treat it to any rate up to the 100-year storm. So we went through and we designed this subdivision in a standard fashion, which in this area is sort of loaded groundwater, so we proposed to fill it some in order to provide exfiltration in common areas, which is required by the Walton County LDC. And we're also required to have a community meeting. And when we had the community meeting and sent out our notification for the community meeting, we got several responses back that indicated some issues they'd had during the 2014 and 2013 flood event in that area. So we investigated those issues carefully and over time and coordinated with the county and the Public Works and to see what was the situation down there. And the situation down there is it's a closed basin. This lot is dry all the time except for under major rain events, and those rain events, both of those were very close to 100-year storm events. During those storm events, there's a pond up to the west of this, about 500 feet to the west, that overflows under major rain events, and it, the water that leaves that overflowing pond travels down the roadway, eventually crosses over the road and fills up this lot a little bit. Exactly how much is unclear, but it flows over the roadway and the lot is slightly lower than the roadway. So when we found this out, we started talking to the neighbors, we started talking to Inlet Beach Neighborhood, Historic Inlet Beach Neighborhood Association, and Public Works to determine how to resolve this issue. I should back up and tell you that this lot is in, the front of this lot is in flood zone X. It's not indicated to flood. The back of this lot toward the beach is in flood zone V11, which is a surge flood zone. So it's not indicated to flood. We're completely allowed to fill it by the LDC. The problem is that there is indications that it's had, has had standing water on it. With that in mind, we started talking to neighbors, talking to the county to see how to handle this issue, because it's a, it's a situation about how to handle the LDC, because the LDC allows you to fill, it doesn't allow you to fill or reduces your density because of that, so we're required to put most of our density in the X-zone. The X-zone is where the water has stayed, has had bonding water before. So we worked through all of our issues and came up with that the best plan was to mimic the existing site. So what we have proposed here is we asked for two variances. One variance is from LDC's requirement that all stormwater is to be in common areas. We've asked for variance from that. We've also asked for variance from having stormwater under buildings. So what we've proposed here is these buildings are required by the LDC, and two of them are not required, but proposing for all of them to be peer-sported. The site in the Vs on those, those houses would have to be at a minimum elevation of elevation 12. We proposed that the minimum elevation's up to elevation 14, and we proposed that the parking would be underneath the structures, and we're proposing to use what is referred to as pervious concrete across the site in order to spread flow from stormwater across the site as much as possible, including underneath the structures, to absorb into the ground and percolate in the same manner that it does now. This particular proposal was run by the Public Works Department. We submitted an application to Northwest Florida Water Management District and received a permit from them. In order to do this, this essentially works out to be a low-impact design-type development. And the reason it's necessary is because if we were to go in here and fill the site, as the LDC allows you to do, and in this particular situation for single-family residences in this area, would essentially require you to do, what that would affect around the homeowners around it is, under a 100-year storm event where it does start to pond water in that area, it would take area away from what could be ponding in that area. So if we filled it, the neighbors would have an adverse impact, because the water would come up even higher on their property. So what we have proposed is to actually remove soil from the site, a certain amount. We've, over here, it's hard to tell, but we propose the wall around this, so the parking could be underneath the structures, and this lowers the initial rating of the site and allows, under a storm event, for most of the water that puddles on the site to pond in here. But if it was a, a high storm event, it could pond up to this wall, but the end result is that it will not allow the flood elevation of what happens in that area, even though it's an X-zone right now, to pond any higher than it does currently. And we've gone through, like I said, we got a variance that was approved in last month and the month before, I can't remember, and if y'all have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You want to explain that in English, please?
I tried to.
Well, not being an engineer, you see kind of blank looks up here, but basically what I get you're saying is, by what you're doing, you're keeping more water off your neighbor's property than if you did it the way the comp plan said. Is that correct?
The way the LDC says, yes, it's correct.
Okay. So you're actually doing your neighbors a bigger favor by doing it the way you are?
That's correct.
Okay.
And did you, um, did you say that the houses would be on pilings?
Yes, they'll be above grade.
Okay.
Parking underneath them.
I couldn't hear what you said.
Yes. They'll be one-story above grade, parking on the first level.
You talk really fast, so it's kind of...
The southerners up here, you know, we have a tough time.
I'd be excited.
All right. I noticed there's two lots on here that extend past the CCC line.
Yes.
Is there any structures going in below the CCC line?
The structures on the, on the south side are mostly below the CCCs. That's correct.
They're...
They're not, the...
Say that again, because I didn't catch it.
I'm sorry. Yes, the three lots on the south side of the property, portions of them are south of the CCC C line.
But is there any...
And they will be constructed there, yes.
There will be construction there.
Yes, but the Walton County CPZ is well south of that, which is, in fact, this property, there's a approved development that is south of this property that'll have a number of homes actually between this property and the Gulf.
Do what?
Yeah, it doesn't look that way. They didn't bring the image, but there's a, there's a development called Lipton Beach that was approved in 2012 that has proposed houses to the south of this property. They, I believe, as part of that proposal, they moved the, doing in order to make that available.
All right. Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right. Any public comment? Hope everybody up there must be ready for the last one of today, anyway. Okay.
It's too early in the morning, wasn't it?
One of the two. All right.
Mr. Nepper?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up is Forest View Village. Mr. Bob?
Mr. Chair, this is a request to approve by final order, project number MAJ 1800014. Is being reviewed by Tim Brown. This is a major development order application submitted by Interlight Engineering Corporation on behalf of Cypress Broad Company, requesting approval to develop a 283-unit apartment complex on 13.10 plus or minus acres with a future land use of general commercial. The project is located on the east side of MC Davis Boulevard, north of U.S. Highway 98 East, and is identified by the parcel number in your staff report. Staff would like to request the staff report to be entered into the record.
So moved.
And I will turn it over to the applicant for any questions.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering, and I have been sworn in. Forest View Village is a planned unit development that was originally approved in 2005, and it's been amended a couple of times, and specifically one of the times was to reduce the size of the property to create what's now the school that's under construction and the county sports park that's back in the back. This property was once part of this PUD. So with the amendment, one more point on the map for reference is MC Davis Boulevard. The property we're talking about this morning, this portion here, was approved for 283 apartment units. So the technical site plan, we have two drop-off connections to MC Davis Boulevard. The apartments are within this area. We've got a parking that surrounds the building, stormwater retention facility in here, there's one up here in the front, and a cool energy facility in this area as well. So this proposal is consistently approved, PUD, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
David, your stormwater is built to what year?
It's to the county requirement, yes, sir, of 25-year storm event.
25?
Yes.
It's all the wet out there. We found that out building the sports park.
And we have a pop-off conveyance. There's an environmental sensor here here...
Right.
...that we can pop off here that ends up next to the dust load on the U.S. highway avenue.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
Any public comment? Seeing none, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Number seven was continued. I think we're on number eight. Bob?
Mr. Chair, this is Santa Rosa Retreat Plat. It's a request approved by final plat, project number PLA 1800006, is being reviewed by myself. This is a plat application submitted by Guston, Cothran, and Tucker Incorporated on behalf of Laird Point Investors, OLC, requesting approval to plat a 10-unit, single-family subdivision on 2.50 plus or minus acres. The project is located off Highway 393, east into Seacraft Drive, approximately .3 miles. The project is on the south side of the road and is identified, the parcel numbers in your staff report. Staff would like to request that you enter the staff report into record, please.
So moved.
The staff, this plat application, they have paid all the required fees, except their recording fees, which they'll pay to time the recording, and is in compliance with the approved development order. If there's any questions, I believe the applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, come forward, sir.
Joshua Wood from Guston, Cothran, and Tucker.
What was the name again?
Joshua Wood.
You've been sworn, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay. How you getting into it? How you planning on accessing that piece of property?
I believe they're going to come up...
Because right now, I don't see a road anywhere around it, except Seacraft to the north, and that looks like it's separated by at least 10 acres.
They're not going to come in from there. It would come up through Maxwell Avenue.
You said you believe. Do you know, or just...
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's where they plan on coming in through.
Which, which?
Maxwell.
Go to find it first.
It'd be down to the southwest.
I see Michael Lane. Is that what you're talking about? Or is Maxwell somewhere else? That's not showing up on my map. Well, you had plans...
Well, you would, you would come in from, I believe that's Michaela Lane, and then that would run into Maxwell, and then you would head north into the subdivision.
All right. Any questions? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Number nine was being continued. Number 10, Seaside School Expansion, to approve by final order. Ms. Rose?
This is a major development order application submitted by Emerald Coast Associates on behalf of Seaside School Foundation and Corporate, requesting approval to construct a 14,255-square-foot school building on 2.09 acres with future land use of residential preservation. This is a civic use area per the Seaside Master Plan map. The location of this project is at the intersection of West Ruskin Street, Smolley Circle, and Seaside. Staff is requesting one condition on this project, that this project is required to plat the lazeum area prior to the final CO on the building permit. There's been a lot of division of land in that area that's never received a plat. Second thing, that you had a handout in which the neighborhood had requested that they consider removing the air conditioning tower, and the applicants responded to that, that they will work with, well, excuse me, it's the town council, on getting that accomplished.
Okay.
So if I can answer any questions for the board, I'd also like to enter the staff report into the record, please.
So moved. All right, any questions from board applicant? Dean, you've got anything?
Very briefly, Dean Burgess with Emerald Coast Associates, BURGIS, and I have been sworn. Ms. Bradley did a good job of introducing the project. This essentially will round out the development of the Seaside School, and we do agree to the conditions within the staff report. I've read the staff report, and we, we agree to all the conditions within it. If there's any questions the board may have specifically, I'd be, I'm prepared to answer them.
You're going to work out the problem with the residents on the air conditioning?
Yeah, there was a cooling tower in this building that basically has a tower on it. And the concern was with more with noise than anything else and potential use, and we've agreed to go ahead and go to a more conventional air conditioning system. Those cooling towers can't be noisy and loud. And representative from Seaside has agreed to, or inside from the school foundation has agreed to not do the cooling tower.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, any public comment?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, what's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
With the staff's condition.
With the staff's condition.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Before we go back to three, can we take a minute to review this?
All right, item number three, we're going to hold up. Commissioner needs about 10 minutes, so we'll be in recess for about 10 minutes, and then we'll get on with that session. We stand in recess. Come back to order, please. All right, we're on item number three of the agenda, which happens to deal with the town of Seaside. Sid, I think you had some comments?
Yes, sir. Just briefly, before we get started, and for the benefit of the members of the public, I'm going to explain the process for us hearing this agenda item. The applicant, Seaside SCDC, will present their application. Then I suggest that Mr. Smoker, who's here to represent Seaside Town Council, be allowed to speak, and then after that, we'll have public comments. So just so it's clear, but I think it'd be better if Mr. Smoker went before the public comment. And then after a public comment, SCDC will have the opportunity to provide rebuttal. And also, just for members of the public and for Mr. Smoker's benefit, SCDC, as the applicant, has the right to cross-examine any witnesses that come forward. So with that, I guess we should turn it over to Mr. Hunter unless staff has anything that they'd like to start off with.
Do staff have any comments prior to Mr. Hunter?
Probably need to introduce the staff report as evidence. Oh, here comes Renee.
This request is to amend the essentially build-out agreement for the town of Seaside. This would be the Second Amendment, requesting approval to amend existing essentially build-out agreement to include a land use equivalency matrix on approximately 21.86 acres with future land use of residential preservation. Staff would like to make some clarifications for the record. One, part of this agreement is not the ownership map. We've got a lot of public comment that come in about the map, staff maps not being correct. We've got a lot of public comment that come in about the map, staff maps not being correct. Uh, and they are correct. The staff maps are not 100% correct. The right-of-way of Seaside is not totally owned by, um, SCDC. Additionally, the, on the, via the northeast corner, there's a parcel that is not located within the DRI. Uh, also, we would like to clarify that, um, each development proposal that comes in on this will go back through engineering review. This is not a final approval on this project. So we'll have individual development orders come in as each project is requesting anything to do with this equipment. And I'd be glad to answer any questions for the board.
Board got any questions?
In that case, I'll turn it over to the applicant. I'd like to enter the staff report into the record, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Chairman, board members. Uh, I'm gonna, if I can, I've got a PowerPoint that I think will help us run through this as quick, more efficiently than if I just stood up here and gave a monologue. I'm sorry, Gary Hunter, on behalf of Seaside Community Development Corporation. Thank you.
Have you been sworn?
Yes, sir. But I'm a lawyer, so swearing me doesn't look good. That's a joke.
I'm not sure it is.
I knew Mr. Anderson may, may take issue with that. So, just a little bit of a, for, for backdrop. Um, what we're asking for is an amendment to essentially built-out agreement of a DRI that was approved back in 1986. Um, Seaside originally was approved as a 92-acre community, uh, multi-use development, residential, hotel, commercial, office, civic. Um, two times this board has amended their development order. And y'all know from the, from the sandestin exercise we went through on a DRI, when, and when a development order under the old DRI laws just got repealed. But under the old DRI laws before 2018, uh, anytime a development order got amended, had to go through the county, so the board would review that amendment, and then had to go through the state review process associated with that DRI. And that happened twice, uh, only to extend the build-out date. And there were some minor tweaks to the development program within the Seaside DRI, but not, nothing significant in those two amendments. Um, and, and that's, in essence, what this slide is explaining. So this, in 2001 was the last time the board and the state agreed to amend the DRI. Uh, and this is the program that was the total program for the Seaside Development of Regional Impact. So 846 residential units, and those residential were composed, as you see, of single-family apartment, uh, units, condominium units, and hotel units. And then 158,000 square feet of non-residential, a variety of commercial mixtures as depicted there. So in, also in 2001, uh, Seaside came to the board and entered into what the statute allowed, which was an essentially built-out agreement. And that essentially built-out agreement, the, the purpose of that agreement in a DRI, only the DRIs allowed that type of agreement. The, the point of that agreement was to say, you're a built-out DRI, and the statute provided what built-out meant. Uh, you had to have reached certain thresholds within your development program. And most importantly, you had to have done all of the mitigation that was required for your DRI entitlements. So if you had to build roads, or if you had to, uh, provide parks, whatever that mitigation obligation was, you had to have completed. And then you could enter into an agreement with the local government saying, here's our agreement that lets, with our remaining entitlements, and it lets us build that out beyond the build-out date that was the deadline for completing the DRI. So you just have that bundle of entitlements that are left over. And you have, consistent with that agreement, you're able to then move forward with that bundle of entitlements. Uh, and, and in, uh, 2018, when the legislature repealed the DRI program, they recognized that there were DRI orders that still existed with essentially built-out agreements. And so they allowed those to remain in place, subject to the local government's oversight. You can amend them, and that's what we're here today asking you to do, is to amend the essentially built-out agreement that is in place, has been in place since 2001 per Seaside. Uh, you've, you amended it once before, a few years ago, uh, with, with a map adjustment that allowed the relocation of the post office from where it is presently over to Seaside Avenue, where they're making the improvements associated with that post office, which comes back to you and had, did come back to you as a major development order application as well. What I just talked about. So here, here's the, here's the Seaside master plan. Uh, the, the area that is in sort of, I'll call it, because I'm color, um, confused, I'll call it Aqua. Uh, that's the residential component of Seaside. Uh, the, the brownish-rust colored area is the civic portion of Seaside. The yellow is the commercial portion of Seaside. And the green is the recreational portion of Seaside, importantly. Nothing that we are asking you to do today does anything to change this map. So if, if a convert, if you were to approve an equivalency matrix, you can't take residential, or let's, let's say you, let's say we're gonna take residential and convert it to commercial. We had residential units left over, we wanted to use the matrix and convert it to commercial. That commercial would have to occur where there's yellow on this map, where commercial is allowed. You wouldn't, you're not converting the ability to use commercial in areas designated as residential. You're just taking residential units and, and exchanging them for, uh, commercial square footage, if that was the use of the matrix. So this is, we're doing nothing to change the land use map. Uh, the permitted uses, where they are identified on this map, stay exactly where they are identified on this map. So in 2001, when you, the board, the county, and the state approved the initial EBOA agreement, this was what was left over in Seaside to be developed. Um, of the 846, I'm, I'm looking at my numbers, but of the eight, roughly 850 residential units, there were 222 left. Of the roughly 158,000 non-residential square footage, there were 74,000 and change of that remaining in 2001. Today, the, what's left is, uh, so the, the vested entitlements of the, of my client, CSAC Community Development Corporation are 218 residential units. That's what they have a right to build today, with no additional improvements required. They, but remember, they've already done the mitigation required. And 52,860 square feet, so roughly, out of a hu- about a third of the non-residential programs left, about a quarter of the original residential program is left. So, so what's in front of you is an equivalency matrix. And I've got an engineer who's far more qualified than I am to stand up here and explain to you how that matrix was assembled and what it does. But I'll, I'll, in, in hopefully very layman terms, try to explain what we're asking for. I showed you from that prior slide, th- these remaining entitlements. And because of that essentially built-out agreement, you can use those entitlements whenever the developer decides to use them where they're allowed within the Seaside community. Um, but they have to be done exactly as this program would allow. So specifically, if they wanted to build any more single-family units, they'd have 15 left to build. Obviously, to build a single-family unit, you gotta have a lot upon which to build it, so that one is not likely to be part of a conversion. Uh, if, if you wanted to build additional, uh, hotel units, they've got 122 to build. Without a matrix, you can't build any more hotel units. If you wanted to offer more civic space, you wanted, good example, and, and Mr. Weatherall's gonna go through this. If, if the Seaside School wants to expand, and we don't have enough civic space to give them, if, if 19,799 square feet weren't enough, then that, they'd be done, because they would need more than 19,799 square feet, and they couldn't do it if, if we didn't have that space to give them. And so what this matrix does, i- is it, is it, in simple terms, takes one of those allowed uses with remaining entitlements and allows you to exchange them for another use that is allowed within the DRI. Only going where that use is allowed, and it's done in a way, formulaically, uh, using county, uh, generated numbers and ITE-based generated numbers related to traffic, such that when you convert, the resulting conversion has equivalent, that's why it's called an equivalency matrix, impacts to what you're te- using. So for example, if you've converted 10 house, housing units, 10 single-family houses to whatever the conversion, let's say that's 1,000 square feet of civic. The 1,000 square s- feet of civic would have no greater impact on the public facilities, water, sewer, roads, and parking than, and, and garbage than would have the 10 residential units. And so the whole premise of a matrix is to allow that equivalent conversion and just allow in a, in a mature development like Seaside, uh, to convert one thing to another and to use the program of entitlements that was originally improved, approved by both the county and by the state. As I said, it doesn't increase any entitlements, and it doesn't allow land uses where land uses aren't already allowed within the map. The map's not changing at all. Uh, and I, that's, this slide is what I just explained, that the matrix is intended to not allow any additional impacts beyond what would be converted. So we, we've heard from, uh, not surprisingly, we've heard from some residents in Seaside concerned, owners within Seaside concerned about what we were doing. Um, I think historically, there's always, when in, when you're in a development and it's mature and people live there, there's always tension when changes or what are perceived to be changes are made. And so I, I wanna make sure that the board appreciates the effort that we went through to make sure the people within Seaside knew what we were doing. This wasn't some sneak attack. Uh, and, and this slide explains that. Back in January, before we submitted this application, in March, we shared examples of what we were pos- proposing to do with the town council. Uh, we later met with them, um, and gave them the entire application before we provided it to the county, for them to see it. Um, we didn't get any feedback from them, and so we submitted the application to the county in, as it says on March the 19th. Uh, I then received a letter from Mr. Smoker, who, um, I've known for a long time and have great respect for, and I, and he set out, here's our concerns, and we responded to it. Um, we then set the matter, the board and your staff set the matter for a hearing in June. My office didn't mail out the notices because I was interacting with Mr. Smoker, and we literally got to the eve of when those notices were gonna, going to go, and they didn't go, so that we could delay to today's hearing for the purpose of having further interactions with them, which we've had. Uh, I think you'll hear from them, they still have concerns with what we're doing, but we've attempted to answer them, uh, and, and at some point, maybe after they speak, I'll address them to the extent they're items that aren't already addressed in what I presented. But I, I wanted to make sure, uh, that you all understood that there, this isn't some, um, surprise, non-engaging effort with the people that own within Seaside. We've been really for the last six months, half a year, interacting with them so that they knew what we were doing, whether they agree with it or not. And I think we'll hear today that they don't. But that, uh, none, nonetheless, we wanted to, to be, uh, open and honest with them about what we were trying to do. So, and by the way, a lot of the concerns, uh, that I presume we'll hear today, at least that I've seen in writing, and I've seen emails that have been submitted to you all, uh, whether you've had a chance to read them or not, I'm not sure. But a lot of those emails were talking about traffic and parking and the, and the, you know, the bad situation that exists, uh, on 30A, and specifically, in this case, in Seaside, to the point that the residents and owners were concerned that this was gonna exacerbate that, as Mr. Weatherall will explain better than I can explain. Remember, the matrix is called an equivalency matrix, and the law allowed that and allows that equivalency matrix for a reason. The exchange is supposed to be equivalent. And so we can quibble about whether it is, and I don't mind questioning them. I feel very comfortable with Mr. Weatherall's analysis and the analysis that's behind this matrix. But it's not intended to allow greater impacts than what are allowed through the development program that's remaining to be used by my client. So my client has an absolute right to build what a minute ago I showed you was the remaining entitlements. No questions asked, nobody argues about that. Without any additional parking, without any additional transportation, um, mitigation, without any additional water, sewer, any of those things that are public facilities. They did all that, and that's, that, what they were required to do as part of their original program has been completed. Uh, the, the, the concerns, so the concerns about parking and transportation aren't going to be addressed in a way that would prevent my client, Seaside Community Development Corporation, from doing anything left that they have a right to do. And all we're asking to do is to be able to equivalent, in an equivalent manner, over time, we don't have a plan for what we're doing with this. So this is not, we're coming to you that we need something, that we're asking for. We're just asking you to put a matrix in place that one day, when somebody does need something, that you can use those entitlements in a way that allow, facilitates that use. But I've heard concerns about transportation, I've heard concerns about parking. We share them, all right? Seaside Community Development Corporation understands that concern. This matrix is not gonna harm or fix th- those concerns. And, and I, and I put these slides up for a reason to illustrate that point. You see on the, on the left side of the slide, Western Lake. On the right side, bottom of the slide, Eastern Lake. In the middle, uh, three, County Road 395, so Seaside slightly to the west of that. In this 1985 photograph, uh, aerial photograph, nothing is there where Seaside is today. 1998, you start to see some development, um, to the, where the shaded area, kinda where the S is in the middle of that, uh, in the middle of that picture, just west of that, is the beginning of Seaside, really a robust version, about 13 years into the, into the development of Seaside. And so you see what's starting to change down around County Road 38. 2007, a very different picture and much more development. Seaside watercolor has since come in, and then over toward Eastern Lake, just in this small area of County Road 38, you start to see to the north a lot more development and, and trips that are obviously trips that have the right and, and at some point are likely to utilize County Road 38. In 2018 today, this is the, the image of today of how that area has developed. So there is no question, uh, that, that traffic on County Road 38 in 2018 is different than it was in 1985. Uh, there is no question that demands upon parking in Seaside because the people, there are more people in that part of Walton County than there were in 1985. But Seaside, it's, Seaside's no different than it was envisioned to be in 1985. What's happened around Seaside absolutely is different. And my client is doing a lot of things that may or may not please the, the folks who reside on property within Seaside, but doing a lot of things, including participating in a, in a County Road 38 mobility study, shuttling employees at his cost from, uh, off-site parking into Seaside, and looking at other mechanisms by which to alleviate some of those problems. Uh, but, but when you build a walkable community, a T and D design community, which we all know, and I know you all know, that Seaside is the model of, uh, not just here in Walton County, but in Florida and in the United States. And you've got developments all along County Road 38 that then piggybacked upon Seaside's design and the, and the award-winning concept that Seaside was. And, and you're going to get, almost encouraged, and Mr. Weatherall can talk about this better than I can, a gridlock type of development. Because the intent is not for us to do what normal we all do, which is to get in our car and go somewhere. It's to, it's rather to get on your bike, to get on your feet, and to not make long trips and, and, and burden road systems, because you're going to a destination that presumably provides the things that you would need, uh, such that that isn't necessitated. And, and I think it, it's just worth pointing out in this conversation that Seaside and the obligations that came with Seaside, road, water, sewer, et cetera, parking, were all established early on, and then again reviewed in 2001. And Seaside's met those obligations. And we're not doing anything to make them, uh, the, to, to worsen conditions such that those obligations should, should change. And, um, and if that's the argument from those who oppose this, um, I'll look forward to a chance to rebut it, because this is an equivalency matrix on, on a, you know, basically a quarter of the entitlements that are left and using those in a way that doesn't worsen that circumstance. And this isn't a fix, and it isn't going to be. It is impossible for it to be a fix for the, for the congestion conditions that exist on, on County Road 38. And, and, and by the way, using the entitlements that we have today isn't going to fix those congestion con- conditions, and we've got a right to use them. So all we're asking for is the ability to, to play with that, uh, those entitlements in a way that makes sense as time goes on, uh, and allow a developer who paid for mitigation for that bundle of entitlements to use them, um, not in a way that worsens the conditions. I think that's it for me. I'm gonna ask. I'm going to ask Mr. Weatherall to come up and, and explain the matrix for you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Ryan, of course, will be happy to answer any questions. When we're done, I'll put his resume into the record just so it's here, and maybe a few other documents. But, we, I appreciate your, your time and consideration of this. I know this matrix itself can get confusing, so hopefully Ryan can kind of, in a layman way, explain it more easily and show us some examples of it and applications so that y'all better understand what we're asking of you. And then again, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them now or later.
Board got any questions for Mr. Hunter?
No, sir. I think he explained it very well.
Thank you.
Mr. Weatherall.
Good morning. Ryan Weatherall with Kimley Horn and Associates, 2615 Centennial Boulevard, Suite 102, Tallahassee, Florida. I was sworn in. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I think Gary teed it up very well. We're looking forward. This is to look at the remaining entitlements that are in front of us, come up with an equivalency matrix that will allow us to evaluate and make decisions to move those entitlements or move those entitlements around within the map that Mr. Hunter stepped through. So, I want to take just a moment and go through some of the transportation components, and then, as Mr. Hunter mentioned, walk through the matrix, a couple of examples, how it was established and that sort of thing. Again, feel free to stop me at any point if you have any questions that come up, and I'll be happy to slow down and walk through those with you. But again, it's important to understand that Seaside is a multi-use development. It's built around those new urbanist principles. In the early 1980s, these principles began to, to show up in the United States, and they included balancing, land use, transportation, and those sorts of things, to have connectivity, walkability, all of the things that we see in Seaside that accommodate that compact urban T and D development and encourage folks, as, as Mr. Hunter mentioned, to get out of their cars and experience the development and the environment. It's also important that this is, this is a development that's recognized around the world, given that it came right on the tail end of those principles beginning to bubble up in the United States, and it began to get developed. It began, as Mr. Hunter mentioned, to be the model for development along 30A as well as model for development around the world. We've heard some of the concerns. And again, these are concerns that, as I would describe them, maybe a little bit in the rearview mirror. These are the sorts of things that have happened on the ground, they're out there today. We understand that there's concerns about the traffic and the parking, that there's been data collection as it relates to peak season parking and traffic volume in and around Seaside. And we'll talk a little bit about that, and I'm sure we'll hear a little bit more about that from others as well. But what we've heard has been that it's vehicle-centered improvements. Urban environments, whether it's a Seaside or it's in Atlanta or New York City, folks aren't going with vehicle-centered improvements anymore in urban environments. They're looking to do other types of improvements, other things that encourage folks to get out of their vehicles, transit, bike, ped, those sorts of things. So, in addressing those concerns, it's important to also understand that in South Walton, traffic during the peak season increases 30-plus percent. That's a significant uptick. And when you look at just that peak season, that's a dramatic difference from the remainder of the year. And when you sort of begin to average that out and you begin to think about, do we build our way out of congestion, that's a pretty big uptick in, in traffic to be trying to build your way out of. And that's not a standard thing that we do anymore in the transportation realm. Vehicle-focused infrastructure in urban environments is no longer the standard, as I mentioned, and it's not uncommon to accept a little bit of congestion from a vehicle perspective. So, the other thing to note is that Seaside has implemented the off-site parking and the shuttle service. They're shuttling in at their own expense, a significant number of employees, and, and that is, is working out well. They're, in the month of June alone, they had 11,700 riders. That's a significant number of folks that have come from this off-site parking in the Grayton Beach area. 95% occupancy of that 130 lot that's up there. So, they're doing things, they're looking at other technologies, other strategies, and things that can be done to help alleviate some of this, and they're not afraid to try to implement them and see if they can help to address some of those concerns, again, that are out there today. Not anything to do with the equivalency matrix or where we're going in the future. So, so the focus of today is, again, to talk about this equivalency matrix. Talk about the entitlements that remain and how do we work with those going forward, the things that the developer can do as it stands. And it's building off of the NOPC in 2001. It's important that you recognize in the NOPC in 2001, there was a transportation study. This transportation study was reviewed by the county, the Regional Planning Commission, DCA at the time, which we now know largely as DEO, and FDOT. All of those agencies took a look at it and were supportive of the findings of that transportation study as it related to that NOPC in 2001. In addition, Gary stepped through very clearly the essentially built-out agreement and what that meant and the connection there. So, the key is the developer has entitlements, has the ability to move forward with what remains, and so, we'll step through what that means from an equivalency perspective. So, the matrix is designed to allow flexibility. Again, that map doesn't change. Where land uses can go does not change. In addition to that, there are no additional impacts. And we'll talk about what that means because this is a very robust matrix, maybe the most robust that I've seen in my career used across the state, and so, we'll talk about what that means. And there are no increases in entitlements, and it does not change the land uses. So, this matrix, and I mentioned the robust nature of it, it focuses not only on transportation, but it also looks at parking, looks at water and sewer, and looks at solid waste. Typically, these matrices simply deal with the transportation component, but in this case, we thought it was important that the matrix consider all of these public infrastructure pieces and evaluate those, and then determine which one was the most limiting. Again, that's an important component of the matrix, and we'll see that in a moment. Which one of those factors in each of the examples of conversion is the most limiting, and then utilize that one. So, again, not to result in any new impacts. So, here's the matrix, and this is a summary matrix. This is the one that would be used moving forward to convert one land, one entitlement to another, and so, we'll step through what that means. So, again, I talked about the fact in a little bit small, hopefully you all can see it on your paperwork up there. But, in each category, we considered parking, solid waste, water, and sewer, as well as the, the traffic. All right. So, let's talk about this. Parking was based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers parking data. It's a standard used across the industry to evaluate parking. So, we use that for the equivalency matrix. For solid waste, we used a publicly completed and documented solid waste study that looked at the frequency of pickup, the volume of pickup, and the density of pickup, to use that as the basis for creating the conversion for solid waste. Water and sewer, that was from our friends at DEP. They published that information, and we use that as the conversion factor. And then for trips, we used ITE's trip generation manual. We kept this consistent with the traffic study that was done in 2001. And that's important because that was reviewed and adopted and approved not only here at the local level by, but by our friends at the state and at the Regional Planning Council. And so, as to keep apples to apples, we used the sixth edition of ITE for our conversion for the traffic component. So, I just want to point that out. In addition to that, as it was related to developing this matrix, that was reviewed with staff at the county and was agreed to be the most appropriate approach to dealing with the trip component in this matrix. So, again, we looked at these four infrastructure components, and then we identified in each category which one was the most restrictive, whether it was parking, solid waste, water and sewer, or traffic trips. And then we moved that one forward into that summary matrix that I showed just a moment ago, and it is again here on the screen. So, those that were the most restrictive got moved forward, so again, so as not to create any new or additional impacts. I'll pause for a moment there because I know that was a, a good bit of information. So, we'll step through a couple of examples, and I think this will help, but let's start by orienting ourselves to the matrix. That top line is the from line. So, again, if we're going to go from one land use to another land use, we start on the top row, and then we come down to the row that we want to, to change to. And then the left, left column, that is the to. So, you sort of orient yourself and you sort of come down, yes, sir?
We've got about a half a dozen of these graphs in here. Which one are you referring to there?
I'm referring to the...
I can't read it.
Yeah, it is called Summary Equivalency Table.
Okay.
Okay, very good. So, again, that top row is the from line, the left column is the to line, okay? So, let's take a look at how this might work. So, if you were going to convert 60 hotel units to commercial or retail space, you would find the hotel column, and you would come down to the commercial or retail row. And then we would note that that conversion factor is 0.27. And so, we would convert those 60 units at a conversion rate of 0.27 to approximately 16,200 square feet of commercial retail space. Again, going back to one of the items that you all dealt with just earlier on your agenda, the school. Here's example number two. Example number two is, should we convert, how many condominium units need to be converted to allow for 15,000 square feet of civic or school space? Well, that number is 46 because 46 condominium units at a conversion rate of 0.33 equals 15,200 square feet of civic or school space. So, you can see, again, we located the condominium column, we came down to the row that matched with civic and school, and we applied that conversion factor to get ourselves what that resulting change needed to be. So, again, in summary, this looks at all of the four major infrastructure components that I introduced and discussed a moment ago. It's a standard tool. We use this across the state. And again, this may be the most robust one in looking at all four of those public infrastructure components that I've seen. It does not do anything to short-circuit the local review process. Ms. Bradley noted that earlier, that development will have to come through for review and approval on the engineering side. So, it doesn't short-circuit that. What it allows is that flexibility moving forward. It does not result in any additional impacts. That's critical to, to understand. It does not increase entitlements, and it does not change the location of land uses as outlined on the map that was reviewed earlier.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
If you can go back or they can bring up the town of Seaside, the one here that shows all the entitlements. And I understand the entitlements, it's already been approved by a previous board, not this board, back in 2001. But, just for an example, if you look on each side of the horseshoe, there's two vacant lots there that have not been developed yet. And let's make an assumption that they're going to be commercial, but there's no additional parking there because the parking has already been established or taken from some location within the DRI. And so, if you're using a residential area that would have X number of parking spaces, that doesn't mean you're going to put them out there where it's going to be needed for the commercial. Am I reading that wrong?
Can you state that one more time to make sure that I fully understand what you're, what you're asking me?
You're pulling me one of them attorney things.
I'm an engineer, I'm no attorney.
I know that, but I'm sitting in any court and had...
I just want to make sure that I, that we're on the same page.
What I'm saying is, if you were to develop those two vacant lots, that are, one on the east side, one on the west side, along 30A, and you build it, or you want to build it, but you don't incorporate parking within that commercial area, because you've already said we've got X number of parking spaces already pre-approved, but they may be located back there in the backside of a housing development, which doesn't help where this is going to be impacted. I hope you understand what I'm saying. I, I can see that you can take the position that all these parking spaces are available, scattered throughout the DRI, but if I want to take and use the matrix to move residential to commercial or vice versa, civic, whatever, there's no, the parking is not going to be on-site where the, the development will take place.
Certainly, and...
Right, and, and I'm just wondering, if you're going to do something there and there's no additional parking for these two particular parcels, where are they going to park? Back there in the back field or walk down there to it? I, I don't know. I just, it's already congested. You all have acknowledged that. I think everybody in this room that's ever traveled 30A understands that. And it's a good thing, you know, it brought a lot of people in here. I don't know, it was literally a destination spot, more town living than what have you, but the fact of the matter is, they come, and they're here. And not having enough parking, I mean, you've got the entitlements of how many parking spaces, you got those. We know that because that goes back over a decade. But, if you're going to look at developing those two areas, I'm just using those two as an example, then I think you'd be remiss if you didn't take some of those entitlements that you, you got over here and put them on-site where this additional impact's going to come. That's just a comment.
Okay, understood. I think the important thing about commercial is one of those things where, commercial doesn't survive when folks can't get to it, when they don't have a way to get out of their vehicle. And so, in, in what you were describing here, from a essentially built-out agreement and what is entitled, certainly they have those entitlements. But again, we mentioned the fact that strategies, techniques, technologies are being considered for addressing just those kinds of components. Again, the new strategy of, of shuttling people in is one of those mechanisms. I don't think that having what you were describing would come without some sort of consideration of, how do we make this successful? I don't think anybody wants to develop commercial that's not successful.
You relied quite a bit on the, the shuttling, and the majority of that shuttling is the employees who work within Seaside.
Correct.
To get the additional space there for the tourists or whomever to park there. So, are you saying that, well, we'll just have these people park offsite, we'll shovel them to whatever new developments you may put in there?
Well, I think there's other transportation considerations that are going on along the corridors, what I'm trying to describe. And, and so, from that perspective, improvements have been recently made at 395. Other plans are being contemplated and, and looking to be implemented over time. I think that this is a dynamic situation, and as Mr. Hunter described, the idea is to allow for flexibility going forward with the entitlements that have been approved and are out there today. I don't think that it's intended to be done in a vacuum without those other considerations. As Ms. Bradley noted, it will come back for review.
Well, you're correct. I mean, even whatever happens today, if there's any DEO presented for any of these parcels that you look at, then we have to do all that review by Planning Commission, TRC, whomever else, then it comes back to us for final decision on it.
I don't think Seaside should rely on what, you know, the, the parking up in Grayton and, and the improvements. I, I think you need to look to yourselves to solve the parking issue within Seaside on these lots, and I may be asking a foolish question. Let's say you're going to convert one to commercial and build a grocery store there. Are you going to take part of that parcel and provide extra parking? Are you just going to rely on the parking that y'all have already been approved for?
I don't know that I can speak to that because as Mr. Hunter noted, I don't know that there's a plan specifically, so...
Well, you can give me an idea.
Yeah, so, that's a fair question, Commissioner, Commander. And so, let's take those two lots that Chairman Chapman asked about.
Yeah.
So, so those two lots today have, we, we today, without ever coming in front of you, have about 25,000 square feet of office or restaurant or commercial that could be developed right there on those two lots. So, you wouldn't need this matrix to develop those two lots. I think the short answer to your question is a direct no. There, if, if someone, and just being honest with you, if someone were to come use that 25,000 square feet to develop either of those two lots that Chairman Chapman asked about, there would be no, you wouldn't put parking, I mean, if you did it, you'd have to put it under the building. You're not, you're not going to build a parking garage in the town center of Seaside, so you'd have to have parking under it. But, as an obligation of the developer, you wouldn't be required to because there, all the parking that's been required for the mitigation of Seaside is in place today. Now, we've done things beyond that, which is the shuttling, and none of that was ever revealed. required. That's just after the fact steps that have been taken to try to alleviate what has become clearly, nobody's arguing this, an entire corridor of congestion. But as Mr. Weatherall properly pointed out, if people can't get to a store, the store doesn't survive. And so whether they're getting there on their foot, their feet, or their bicycle, or a golf cart, or Uber, or their car, is to be determined. But I think, you know, a hotel could go there. That's a commercial space that today, there's an entitlement to, I think, a hundred and twenty-two hotel units.
And where would you expect those people to park?
That's an excellent question. And if I were a hotel developer, I probably wouldn't be in front of you today asking for an equivalency matrix to be approved, and I'd be smarter than I am. But I think you'd have to figure that out. You'd either have a valet system where anybody that came to that hotel would have to valet their vehicle, and it would go park, they'd go park it, the valet would go park it wherever that is. Or you would figure out a means of parking it, probably underneath the hotel. You'd have to do it underneath. In this setting, you would have to do it underneath. But I think, in closing, and I'll come back after Mr. Smolker and others come up and express their thoughts on this, but remember, this is a matrix that is, that accompanies an essentially built-out agreement that goes far into time forward. So we're today talking about a circumstance that I think Ryan used the word dynamic, we know is changing. So what we do today in a car is, we know this because we all see it happening, is going to be very different than what happens in a car ten years from today, or even probably five years from today. Ford and General Motors are building cars that don't have drivers to them today. So when those cars are driving down thirty-eight as shuttle systems, and they're dropping people off, and then they're going down to Blue Mountain Beach, and then they're going down, coming back and dropping someone off in Seaside, and then they're going down to Rosemary Beach, there are going to be a lot less cars parked. And so parking over time, if you talk to anybody that builds parking garages for a living, they're finding other things to do right now. They know that the horizon to build, the demand for parking garages in the next quarter century is going to be far less than in what we have experienced in our adult-driving lifetimes because people aren't going to be using cars, particularly in an urbanized setting like County Road Thirty-eight. And so I think that's the important part of this. We don't, we're not asking for this matrix because we know we need something. I mean, I know everybody thinks that there's some devious, they want to go, as soon as they get this, they want to go exchange A for B, and B's going to be horrendous for us because it's going to create all these new trips. If, I'm telling you right now, I'm sworn in, I know I'm a lawyer, if I knew what we were proposing to do, I would tell you. But there is no proposal to do anything. We could do whatever right now is a vision for what may be done in Seaside with our existing entitlements. We don't have a buyer waiting to buy the entitlements. This isn't, you know, we're upping the amount we could sell the rest of our entitlements for because we've got somebody waiting to pay for it. We just are trying to put in place, frankly, a matrix that is done with most DRIs in Florida, and typically is done on the front end. Should have probably been done when the EBOA was initially done in two thousand and one, it wasn't. And so now we're coming forward saying, here's what we've got left. Let's have this matrix in place to let everybody's life be easier as we go forward. Y'all just approved, in Sandestin, you just approved, remember, a conversion of residential to hotel units. My client, SOA, in that circumstance wasn't up here objecting to that. We understood what was going on. Y'all only looked at traffic in that circumstance. Your staff only demanded an evaluation of traffic. But Mr. Becknell took those residential units, converted them to a hotel unit, he made sure the traffic wasn't any worse than what the number of residential units would have generated, and he got his hotel development order. And that's all this is doing. It's just putting in place ahead of time that flexibility so you're not coming in every time someone wants to do something and looking at it. And there's a decent amount of entitlements left today. We don't need anything. We're just saying, let's put this matrix in place so that going forward, we've got it there so that every time somebody's trying to do something, they're not back here taking your time and arguing about it because it's on a piece of paper and no one's confused about how that translation from one to another takes place. But I'm happy, again, to answer any of your questions. Otherwise, I'll be quiet, sit down, and come back up afterwards.
Okay. Mr. Hunter, do you have any other evidence by persons to...
No, sir. No, sir, Chairman, thank you.
All right. All right, I think Mr. Smolker, you're up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you on this matter today. My name is Dave Smolker. I'm with the Smolker Bartlett Law Firm. We're a land use property rights litigation firm out of Tampa, Florida. We've been retained by the Seaside Town Council to oppose this equivalency matrix. And I would start out by just noting, Mr. Hunter, who I have enormous respect for, has definitely attempted to engage us in this process, and it generated actual traffic studies and parking studies that we performed in order to test the underlying validity of this equivalency matrix. Because we're concerned that it essentially opens up the sort of anything-do's land use scheme that assumes that there's no additional impacts. Well, for, to assume there's no additional impacts, we also have to assume that the impact assessment upon which it's based is accurate. And we will put on testimony of Mr. Oliver, who will tell you that the impact assessment upon which this equivalency matrix is based is fundamentally flawed. It greatly underestimates the actual parking and traffic impacts that are being experienced in Seaside. And I don't have to tell you, gentlemen and lady, about the problems out there. It's severe. I mean, it really is. And I don't think that an equivalency matrix enhances the situation. In fact, I think Mr. Oliver's testimony will demonstrate that it actually exacerbates the situation. We have a couple of preliminary objections, and by the way, I have been sworn, a couple of preliminary objections. They're more procedural in nature than anything else. But the first is that the actual maps that are included in the staff report, which you're being recommended to, suggested to approve, are not accurate in two respects. First of all, there's two streets, Seaside Avenue and West Ruskin Street, that are included within the application that you would be asked to act on, that are in fact not part of the application. And the reason that's significant is because obviously if you implement an equivalency matrix, then you are going to be affecting those streets, and those streets are residential streets that are owned by the associations, residential associations within Seaside. The second sort of issue, and this was mentioned by the staff, is that there's a parcel in the far northeast corner of the town of Seaside, it does not show up on this particular exhibit, which illustrates the point. You cannot use an EBOA, even if it was authorized, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, but even if it was authorized, you can't annex any new property into the Seaside DRI through an EBOA agreement, even if it were authorized. So, yes, sir.
That northeast parcel you're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's already been discussed, that it is not part of this application here because it's outside that DRI. Is that correct?
Okay.
So that's already been addressed.
I think I just wanted to make sure that's...
While I've got the mic, what about the two streets he's referring to?
Ruskin Street, if I'm not mistaken, for that one, there's a portion of that property, I believe that it's owned by SCDC, and I would ask the applicant to clarify that because we base this on their ownership maps. But we actually shown at the bottom of that street that it's just a portion of. As far as Seaside Avenue, I believe the only portion of Seaside Avenue that's owned by the applicant is a portion in which was changed to civic.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I guess for clarification purposes, we just want to make it clear that only those portions of those two streets that the application demonstrates is owned by SCDC would be subjected to any approval. Is that correct?
And that's my understanding in talking with staff.
Okay, great, good, thank you. Now, what I'd like to do now is let's talk about what our main concerns are. We have really two categories of concerns. One is, we have serious questions as to whether you even have the authority to act upon this application for several reasons. First of all, the authorization for an essentially built-out agreement was contained in Section three eighty point oh six, Parent fifteen, Parent G, Florida statutes. That specifically authorized equivalency matrices as well as essentially built-out agreements. Effective April sixth of two thousand and eighteen, that statutory provision was repealed. So as it sits now, other than a provision in Florida statutes that recognizes the validity of existing essentially built-out agreements, there is no authority for either amending an essentially built-out agreement or for having an equivalency matrix as part of one. And so, and we checked your land development code and your comprehensive plan to see if there was some provision that you may have enacted that would have authorized it, and there are none as near as we can tell. So we don't think you really even have the authority to go forward to approve this particular application. I would suggest that if you are going to consider an equivalency matrix, it would probably have to be done pursuant to the developer's agreement statute under Chapter one sixty-three, which I know Ms. Noize is familiar with. But right now, as it stands, I do not believe there's any legal authority for what the applicant is requesting. Now, there's the argument that, well, at the time they made the application, there was authority, and therefore you should be able to consider it. But I can tell you from having dealt with this issue before in other contexts, that there's Florida case law that basically says you have to look at the law that exists at the time that you're being asked to make the decision, to see whether you have the authority to make that decision. And I think it's undisputed here that under the current statutory scheme, there is no authority for what you're being asked to do. Now, the staff report cites to a provision of Florida statutes, which I think is attached to your agenda package. But if you read that as authority, you can't read that as authority for what you're being asked to do today because it refers to the authority of the State Land Planning Agency to enter into agreements. It doesn't mention anything about counties or cities or other local governments. It's referring to the authority of the State Land Planning Agency, which would be, at this point, the Division of Economic Opportunity. So again, there's no authority for what you're being asked to do today. Now, Mr. Hunter made a couple of points upon which his arguments are based. One is that the existing unused entitlements are absolutely vested. Now, we don't agree with that. And the reason we don't agree with that is because as part of an essentially built-out agreement, in my interpretation, you're essentially saying, we want to be free of having to go through the DRI process for the rest of the development that we want to undertake. And the consideration for the essentially built-out agreement is that the developer doesn't have to be encumbered by the DRI process anymore. The consideration that's flowing to the public and to the government is that any future development that hasn't occurred is going to be subject to the county's local land development regulations and comprehensive plan. I think that means that essentially that additional amount of development is no longer vested. If the comp plan or land development code specifically is in conflict with what they're attempting to do, then you would have the discretion to approve it in the face of an argument that it was vested under the DRI. And I think that that's a fair interpretation of the statute. So I don't agree that they have an absolute right here to essentially make the problem worse, is really what they would be doing. We have Mr. Bill Oliver here to testify. To give you a little bit of a background on this, Mr. Hunter mentioned the two thousand and one NOPC Notice of Proposed Change, where the development order was amended, and they tweaked certain things. And that's true, they did tweak certain things. And they did a traffic study. And that traffic study was based on ITE trip generation rates effective as of two thousand and one. It was not based on actual traffic counts or actual traffic conditions being experienced within Seaside. Had it been, then we probably, you would have been able to have identified the problems that we're now experiencing today. And so, as a follow-up to that, we retained Mr. Oliver, he's an expert in transportation, engineering, and planning, to conduct traffic studies to assess the existing conditions out there to see whether or not we really have a DRI that is essentially in compliance with the underlying assumptions upon which the entitlements were based. And what he will tell you is that those assumptions are fundamentally flawed. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Oliver, and then once he's done, I'll come up with a few closing arguments, and then that would conclude our...
Mr. Hunter, do you have any questions for him?
Okay.
All right. Mr. Oliver, I believe you're up.
Thank you. Excuse me. My name is Bill Oliver. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Florida. Have a master's degree in civil engineering. I've been doing DRIs for probably forty years now. I've done forty-seven different DRIs, totaling a hundred and seventy-one million square feet of development, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dwelling units. So I've got a few DRIs under my belt. We engineers are, as we've experienced this morning, have a long history and a proud legacy of having a hard time expressing ourselves. So if I stumble anywhere or say things and you start to get lost, holler, that's a joke, you can laugh. Okay? We're past that. Okay, well, very good. As David indicated, we were retained by the town council to review Seaside, the parking and traffic circulation issues that they're having, in light of the issues they're experiencing relative to traffic and parking. The Board of County Commissioners is obviously aware of the issues, as you've indicated this morning, and formally in your comprehensive plan, you have designated County Road Thirty-eight as a constrained facility and subject to further studies. And as I read it, those studies are not complete yet, as I'll talk about in a few minutes. So we've undertaken substantial field data collection, which clearly, as David indicated, invalidates the assumptions of the, that were made regarding this land use trade-off mechanism or equivalency matrix that's before you today, and in fact, invalidates the assumed traffic generation and the impacts on the counties and the public roads that Seaside has on the public road system. So that's the information that my client has asked me to share with you all today. So first, I'm going to talk for a little bit about the traffic generation. And as I do this, you might, just to kind of help follow the numbers, you might find it handy to create a little table on your notes, or if you have something to write on. And the table needs to have two columns, one for a set of four traffic numbers, one for a set of four parking numbers. So I'll try to lay out some context for you all here. Okay, traffic's important because it's by the number of cars and vehicles that are generated by the development that we assess how much of an impact they have on the public road system and what mitigation measures are required. In the nineteen eighty-six DRI and in the two thousand and one EBOA analysis, assumptions were made about how much traffic would be generated, and assumptions about how much of that traffic would be exchanged between onsite land uses, and how much of that traffic would come in from outside. And that's a concept we call internal capture. The, so the estimate that was made in the original DRI was that about thirteen hundred and sixty peak-hour trips would be generated, and about half of those trips would be captured internally to the site. They would not go out onto the public road system, but that the other half would go out onto the public road system. So in the original DRI, an estimate was made that six hundred and seventy-two peak-hour trips would go out onto the public road system. When the EBOA was undertaken, and these are, and these are the trips that the site generates, it has nothing to do with the amount of traffic that might be occurring on County Road Thirty-eight from other sources. We're not talking about that at all. In the two thousand and one EBOA... In the 2001 EBOA, and this will be the first number I suggest you write down, the SCDC's consultant recognized the resort nature of these homes, recognized that the original vision for Seaside as being kind of, as I see, a craftsman's village where people lived and worked together and so forth, that that vision had changed. He changed the traffic generation rates from standard, single-family homes that people actually live in to reflect more of a tourist orientation, starting to recognize this site as a, as a tourist vacation destination. And at that time, his estimate of the gross number of trips, and this is the top number you need to write down in this, in the column on trips, estimated that about nine hundred and twenty-two total trips would be generated, down from the thirteen sixty that was originally estimated, and that of those nine twenty-two, he kept the same internal capture assumptions and said that only five hundred and seven would be exiting the site and going offsite. So we then took the amount of development that was identified, and you all saw the slide earlier, as what was approved, and the Emerald Coast and Associates inventory of how much entitlements remain today, and subtracted those to identify how much development is actually on the site today. And then took those numbers and applied them to the hall traffic analysis, and estimated that as of right now, the site is, should be generating about seventy percent of the trips they said they would be at build-out, or three hundred and fifty-five external peak hour trips. So then the question was, what's really happened? We undertook traffic counts. We basically took a series of traffic counters, machine counters, and established a cordon around most of Seaside, not all of Seaside. Basically, most of the development that's on the north side of County Road 38. This cordon excluded then about fifty homes and rental units on the south side of 38. The school was not in session. There's trips that are generated by Seaside that park on County Road 38 that we did not pick up, and we actually, to get good clean counts, had to set the hoses for the machine counts about a house or two north of 38. So we actually missed even about thirty-two more homes to get the good clean counts. We know confirmation by the town, by the town council and their staff that no special events were occurring, as would normally happen, no weddings, no concerts, no festivals. School, the school was not in session. So even under these conditions, Seaside was measured to generate upwards of one thousand peak hour trips. And over the, and well over even the DRI estimate of six hundred and seventy-two trips for many hours of the day. So clearly, the assumptions of the traffic analysis are in error. Is the site's generating three times the trips that it was estimated to generate? And further, the matrix that's before you today relies on those assumptions of the lower trip generation to establish those relationships between the land uses that would indicate how many square feet of commercial you might get if you traded off a hotel room. In the, in the world of traffic engineers and in the world of DRIs, we would say that this DRI is in substantial deviation. They had an allowance of six hundred and seventy-two trips of external impact. The laws that are repealed used to give them about a fifteen percent margin on that, but even so, they've used up, even at seventy percent of development, they've used up more than the amount of traffic impact that was allocated to them, allotted to them, or mitigated for, if any mitigation happened at all. They're done, they're finished. That will be the conversation with the traffic engineers in the DRI arena. And, and therefore, they have no entitlements left to which to apply this land use trade-off Okay, let me shift my gears a little bit, and, oh.
And one of the thought, one other idea, concept that's happening here, too. In, in a way, some of the things, the changes that have happened in the development plan over the years have kind of contributed to this. In the original DRI development order, you can see the central circle here, the circulation and connections to the northwest and connections to the northeast, that would allow cars that came into the central circle to access the parking areas without having to go back out onto County Road 38. As time went on, you can see that the connection to the northwest was closed off, and in the post office approval, the connection to the northeast was closed off. Now, if anybody comes into the central square to go to get, and can't find the parking space there, what they got to do? They got to go back out on County Road 38 and hopefully find, if they can find it, parking this back on some circle, or go west, or wherever. In a sense, the developer has taken a part of County Road 38 and appropriated it for himself, for, to, in, to sort of as part of his own internal circulation now.
So parking. For parking purposes...
The cap, the Seaside is kind of divided into two separate... The local...
Speak up a little bit when you wave at the mic, please.
Okay, will do. The local residential streets are managed and controlled by the town council. You can park in that area by permit only, and they have the authority to tow, tow cars. So in a sense, the commercial district is served by parking on the central square, in Quincy Circle, that's right behind it, the Smithsonian Circle, and a little stub that runs to the north. There's additional parking, as has been talked about, parking, the county parking lot on the west edge of Seaside, between Watercolor and Seaside, and the remote lot up on County Road 395, where employees sometime park and are shuttled in. In our observations, we focused on the commercial district. And we focus on that because the inadequacy of parking there leads to those hunting fruitlessly for parking to either park in places that are not designated for parking, or on the permit-only residential parking streets, or to circulate through the residential neighborhood streets in search of parking. This obviously degrades the quality of life that, and the safety of the residents. So from my review of the parking situation, I did a similar analysis as I did for traffic. Looked at, first I replicated the analysis that Hall did, starting with the parking rates that are either in Walton County's land development code and when they're not available in the code from nationally known sources. According to Hall's analysis, per the land development code, the commercial district should be provided with seven hundred and ninety-six parking spaces. So that's the first number in that parking column at build-out. But because they applied the same internal capture rates that the traffic, traffic generation study says are not valid, that they estimated that really the commercial district only needed four, uh, four hundred and eleven parking spaces. And then, to extend Hall, Hall's analysis to where we are today, the developed land uses are supposed to need only two hundred and eleven parking spaces. Again, that's because they assumed that almost half of the shoppers and customers of the commercial district would walk from the homes to the commercial district, and therefore, the commercial sites wouldn't need the parking. So we observed parking in the commercial district on a Friday and a Saturday, June fifteenth and sixteenth. Again, no concerts, no festivals, nothing that might draw an unusual crowd there. And we monitored about four hundred and seventy-seven total parking spaces in the commercial district. And when I say it's about four hundred and seventy-seven spaces, it's because the parking spaces are not delineated. And so sometimes when two pickup trucks park on either side of a space, it gets too snug, nobody's going to use it. So there's some, there's some, there's some flex, but roughly four hundred and seventy-seven total spaces. Some spaces are reserved for homes. Some were combed off due to construction. Some were reserved for specific commercial uses, like the check-in site for the rental agency, or the spaces that are reserved for the post office. And there are also some spaces designated for electric vehicles and handicap spaces. We also observed an additional seventy-eight parking spaces on public right-of-way on County Road 38. So we, we monitored it. Okay? So we monitored about five hundred and fifty-five parking spaces in all. And what we found was that throughout the course of the day, those parking spaces were anywhere from about ninety percent occupied to a hundred and three percent occupied. So let me talk for a minute about what that means. What ninety percent utilization means is that when we drove through hunting for a parking space, we basically found about one space in ten available. If you go to ninety-five percent, it's one space in twenty. At ninety-six point seven percent, it's one space in thirty. A hundred and three percent means they're all full, and people are parking where they're not supposed to park. So, so imagine going into a parking lot and having to find one space in fifty or seventy-five spaces, and it's not just you cruising the lot, there's a dozen other cars cruising the lot as well. So it's not a good situation. Industry standards basically say that for retail land uses, you want about an eighty-five percent utilization. If you're in a, more of an office in a worker environment, ninety percent is considered acceptable. But when you're in the environment they're in, where you have other people hunting for the spaces, eighty-five percent would be a good, good margin. So we observed five hundred and fifty-five spaces that were open for use in the commercial district, and they were full beyond acceptable limits. And this was at a level of development that's supposed to only need two hundred and eleven spaces. So clearly, the parking, so clearly, the parking needs numbers in the matrix were not validated, not feel validated, and they were unrealistic assumptions that the field data proves are incorrect. Seaside residents have additional concerns regarding parking. Some homes have no designated parking spaces and must compete with commercial shoppers for parking. Some commercial establishments have no designated loading zones for delivery trucks, and trucks end up parking in a street and blocking the street while they're delivering goods. There has been apparently discussion of a stage in a mass seating arena, I don't hear about that secondhand, holding up to thirteen hundred people. If so, where would they be parking? How about the school? Has it dealt with school drop-off, parent picking up their students, arriving early and waiting somewhere for school to let out to pick up their kids? So beyond the concern of impact that adequate parking has on the resident's quality of life, what other practical concern does this analysis raise? Well, and Gary has already alluded to this, if the county accepts the hall numbers, then Seaside has supposedly already provided adequate parking for all of its vested land uses. Will they propose then that they can continue to develop more commercial, or civic, or residential, or school uses without the need to provide additional parking? This will only worsen the problems that are being experienced. And the assumptions about internal capture have a very direct impact on that land use trade-off matrix. It will change if they go back and readjust and, and do a field study, realize what the traffic generation really is. The relationship between, if you give up a hotel room, you get two hundred and seventy square feet of retail, those relationships will change. I've run some examples, the two seventy, they won't get, if they give up a hotel room, they won't get the two seventy, it'll drop to a hundred and sixty or a hundred and seventy, somewhere in that range. So you can see how those internal capture assumptions, unvalidated, can affect how much development they really feel they can put on the site. And that's something that needs to be scrutinized to a much higher degree. And there are other comprehensive plans, so that's, that's kind of the discussion on the parking. There's other issues just regarding the comp plan, your development review process, I think that have been alluded to. The Seaside development is regulated by the EBOA and through it, the original DRI, but a decision to amend the EBOA to insert this matrix must also consider the requirements of the county's comp plan and land development code, and be sure that provisions for reviews and, and so forth in those codes are preserved and protected and not sidestepped. I mentioned earlier that County Road 38 had been designated as a constrained facility, subject to further studies. In objective, in your transportation element, objective T 1.6, and in T 1.9, more specifically for County Road 38, Walton County requires itself to protect, preserve, and improve, not worsen, um, lost my spot here. Uh, yeah, protect, preserve, and improve the public health, safety, and welfare by coordinating land use and transportation planning. Policy T 1.6.3, you were, you required yourself to develop criteria to manage the land uses within and adjacent to those designated corridors, which include County Road 38, to manage the types of restrictions on non-residential and residential construction within the corridor. We know a County Road 38 study has been done, and it really couldn't find any improvements that would make a sizable impact on operations. But we've not found any policies that might establish restrictions on construction within the corridor as was required by your policy. So we assume that study is incomplete at this stage of the game. Other concerns with compatibility of the proposed ma, there are several other concerns with compat, compatibility of the proposed matrix and with the comp plan. Comp plan objective one, well, land use objective 1.1 states that Walton County will direct development to areas having adequate infrastructure and service capacity, such as for traffic and parking to accommodate the anticipated development that does not exist for existing land uses, nor is it clear if any improvements would be made along with this additional development that's being proposed, and from earlier discussions, it doesn't sound like it will. Land use policy 1.3.2 defines the residential preservation, future land use category, which is applicable to Seaside, and stipulates that development within that corridor, category will be in accordance with the recorded development approval recorded before November seventh, nineteen ninety-six. Adoption of a land use matrix allows changes to be made in what today is an unforeseen matter, land use matrices. And I've done many of these. This one's wide open. Usually, they get approved with a series of restrictions and limitations on the extent to which they can be applied, what types of land uses can be swapped for other land uses, and so forth. So in the land use, uh, land use policies require those, such changes to be reviewed in a more specific location by location manner, through the submittal of a compatibility analysis, and through a public hearing review process. Section 11.05.01b2 of the land development code indicates that a compatibility analysis must address, among other things, traffic circulation and existing road conditions. So to the extent that the developer, development's not regulated by the DRI and/or EBOA, it's subject to the county's comp plan and land development code, the proposed matrix does not address through any limiting conditions the many levels of review that would normally be mandated by the comp plan and LDC, and thus, it, it may, it would leave the potential for unforeseen impacts and detrimental effects. So, to conclude, the approval of this matrix, I think, is ill-advised because it's based on assumptions regarding internal capture, traffic generation... on assumptions regarding internal capture, traffic generation, and parking needs that have been proven through our field data collection to be inaccurate. And because of that, the numeric relationships in the matrix between the land use categories are wrong. It proposes to allow development of land uses that will further exceed the trip generation allowances granted in the original DRI and the EBOA. From a traffic perspective, the development has used all of its anticipated traffic generation, shouldn't be allowed to generate more traffic, worsening the situation without dealing realistically with additional impact mitigation. It could be applied to worsen the parking shortages that currently exist, as I think they have suggested it will be. It appears the matrix could be applied to avoid reviews that would normally be mandated by the comp plan and land development code. So we don't think, in its current form, it provides the county and its citizens with adequate protections.
Okay. Mr. Hunter, you have any questions for him? You do?
I do.
Okay, well, let's hold up. I've got a commissioner needs to take a break, so we'll take about a ten-minute break. We'll stand in recess till then. Come back to order, please. Uh, before we get into where we left off a minute ago, um, if y'all got any idea approximately how much more time you're gonna need for your cases, uh, we're coming up on the noon hour. If it's gonna go past it, that's fine, but I'll just let everybody know we'll break at noon for lunch, uh, if we haven't finished up or shortly thereafter, okay? Mr. Hunter, you understand, you okay with that, I guess?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We should be done.
I, I think so. If I take ten minutes, I'd be surprised.
Okay, I think where we left, I offered Mr. Hunter any opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Oliver. So, is that still what you wanna do?
Yes, sir. Mr. Smoker told me he was gonna, uh, close with his closing thoughts, and then I've got a few questions. I think y'all are gonna take the public after that, is that right?
As soon as y'all present your case, we'll take the public, and then, uh, you'll have one other opportunity for closing or rebuttal.
Yes, sir.
And then we'll make a decision, one way or the other. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Dave Smoker, on behalf of the Seaside Town Council, and I have been sworn. I'm gonna, I'm gonna quickly try to sum up, uh, a couple of points. One is, uh, I noted that there was a letter that was, uh, was provided to the commissioners, uh, and I believe all concerned, to be provided in the record by Ms. Deborah Ann Kelly. And, uh, we had an opportunity to review that and would, would endorse, uh, the findings that she makes along with the conclusions that she makes, because I think they're, they're accurate, uh, both from a legal and a factual standpoint.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I, I don't think that those comments are in your packages because we received those early this morning.
No, actually, they are. I did add them to the handouts this morning. My wife, my wife and Kelly, I got printed this morning about that.
We got this big handout, we got another one.
Yeah, the very last one, so.
Isn't that you?
Yeah, yes, sir.
And I think she sent us all an email, too. Yeah, she sent us all an email, and I've included it in my packet.
So I'm gonna try to sum up briefly, as a lawyer, if you can actually believe that. Uh, I'll try to keep it short and sweet. Uh, I, I think, you know, Mr. Hunter said something that, that I, that really stuck for me was, he said, "They don't need this." So if they don't need it, then let's not approve an equivalency matrix, which our expert believes is only gonna make the matters worse. We all agree, there's a serious problem in traffic congestion and parking out there, and we need to figure out a way to address it. And I, I really honestly believe, based on my experience in this field, that the, the best thing that could happen here is for this board to deny this request. It's not gonna help matters, and let's figure out how to solve this problem. Uh, i- it's a problem that has grown over the years, there's no point in pointing fingers, it's just there. We need to take a responsible approach to trying to solve the problem. I can tell you that this, I'm authorized to tell you that Seaside Town Council is prepared to be a partner in trying to solve this problem, uh, both from a participatory and potentially even a fiscal standpoint. So I think we ought to get busy, uh, in figuring out how to solve the problem, not doing things that might make it worse. So in conclusion, uh, we would ask that you, uh, you deny the request for the reasons that we've previously stated. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Ms. Sissy Canelli, who's, uh, on the board of the Seaside Town Council, is here. Sissy, can you speak to that? Um, she's, uh, available to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, we're going into the public comment section. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make a public comment this time? Come forward, please identify yourself and advise if you've been sworn or not.
Good morning, I'm Helen Gordon, and, um, I drove six hours from our home in eleven forty-five Winterberry Way in Conyers, Georgia, to be with you today.
Have you been sworn?
And I have been sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
Our children, I'm sorry, our children have grown up coming to Seaside since nineteen eighty-nine. We bought our Seaside cottages in two thousand and three. Now our grandchildren come with us. I'm an officer in my Seaside two HOA and hold a master's in city planning from Georgia Tech. I love Seaside, but I'm worried. This past June, as our family enjoyed Seaside Central Green with our grandchildren, I noticed traffic has intensified and slowed on Thirty A at downtown Seaside just this past year. Seaside Avenue right-of-way was recently closed at Central Square, as you know, and converted to civic land for the relocation of our post office. I didn't know that he was going to bring this up, but, you know, I might be a little redundant, um, with Bill Oliver talking about the congestion where you see the brown, uh, right there at Central Square and, and the commercial, it used to be a road that would take people over to Smolian Circle where there is more additional public parking. But now, that has been shut off, so, uh, people come into Seaside off of Thirty A, have to, and when they don't find a parking space, they have to go back out to Thirty A and then come back into Seaside. This is like three times stopping traffic, uh, and then they end up on our residential streets, wandering around trying to find the public parking. It's a mess. Some say congestion equals success, but there is a darker side. And I'm from Atlanta, I mean, outside of Atlanta, CDC is there, uh, our planning, when I was taking my planning courses, we had one at CDC. And they were telling us about how, uh, congestion can also bring insidious health issues. It's unhealthy for us to be breathing the fumes from these cruising cars while we eat our lunch in Seaside. Yet our own county's ordinance, and I want Renee to, and I think I've talked to Renee about this before, for walk-up eating establishments, has allowed Seaside's developer to add more and more food trailers and more and more outdoor, uh, seating for diners at Bud and Alley's and Great Southern without requiring any more parking. So we now have more people than ever exposed to this unhealthy car cruising congestion. Once this matrix is recorded, how can you tell this developer he can't convert office entitlements to more commercial trailers? He has a matrix on record that says he can. You are gifting, and, and just in, in my observation, and I'm not an engineer, but it appears that you're gifting this developer a legal argument against yourself that could come back to bite you and us. So I ask you to seriously reconsider and don't sign this final order today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter, you got any questions for her? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I think she's coming, and lady on the front row's next, thank you.
Hello, I'm Sissy Canelli, and I've been sworn in. Uh, I'm on the town council in Seaside. My family has owned in Seaside for nineteen years, and so we've seen lots of changes. We bought there because we liked the idea of the Seaside community and the walkability and the bikeability and people sitting on their porches and being able to talk to each other and get to know each other. The main principle of new urbanism that Seaside advocates is pedestrian walkability. Cars are supposed to be parked and not impeding the walking and biking of pedestrians. We have no sidewalks in Seaside, so our narrow streets are our sidewalks and bikeways. Ninety percent of Seaside is residential, and all our residential streets are private, with parking only for those staying in Seaside, staying in residential. So the other ten percent is commercial and totally separate from the residential in that the owners make no money from commercial, and it actually serves no purpose for us unless we can get into the restaurants and stores. The way things are now, we cannot. There's a two-hour wait everywhere, so we don't even try. We've all learned not to move our cars once we've parked because someone coming to commercial looking for a parking place will take our parking space, since there are never parking spaces in town where they're supposed to park. So many come to Seaside to try to eat and end up spending an hour circling and looking for a parking place. Before that, they're backed up on Thirty A for at least thirty minutes. When they finally get to Seaside, just as Helen said, they turn in, there are no parking spaces. Now they have to try to get back on Thirty A, and then they turn into the private residential streets and try to take a parking space that's for owners and renters. The traffic cutting through our private residential streets from Thirty A, Three Ninety-Five, Grove, and Forest is just overwhelming, and it also affects our neighbors in Seegrove. This is making life miserable and dangerous for those of us in Seaside trying to use our narrow streets to get around. It's especially dangerous for all the little kids staying in Seaside who are trying to play and ride their bikes on their narrow streets. I tried to ride my bike from Seegrove Market into Seaside last Friday night. The cut-through traffic off Three Ninety-Five coming into Seaside on Grove was awful. When I finally got into Seaside, the traffic was so bad, I was almost hit three times. One car came so close, I had to jump off my bike to avoid them. Many cars were just stopped on Smolian, parked, waiting for somebody to leave so they could find a parking place. With cars coming in the other direction, there was no way to ride my bike. Couldn't get through them, couldn't get around them, so I just got off, walked through Ruskin Park, and went home to my house. Our streets should not be overwhelmed with traffic and dangerous for, for us to even use. The traffic cutting through Seaside from Three Ninety-Five, Grove, Forest, and Thirty A to avoid the backups on Thirty A caused by Seaside are creating a real danger to us in Seaside. Seaside is already overbuilt beyond its capacity of parking, transportation, and infrastructure. Seegrove, Seaside, and Watercolor are overwhelmed with backed-up cars on Thirty A. Please don't make it worse. Please examine the facts before accepting the vague, unproven claims of a developer and be aware of an even more dangerous situation you will be creating if more traffic is allowed in Seaside. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Um, I'm Kelly Anderson, I have been sworn in, and I am here representing Mr. Dave Rochkob, who could not be here because he is out of the country, and he has provided a statement that he would like me to read into the record. In the thirty-two years I have had my restaurants in Seaside, I have had the distinct pleasure of being associated with Robert and Darrell Davis and all those town planners and architects who have contributed to Seaside. It is widely known the immense design and planning influence Seaside has had on Thirty A, its neighboring communities of Watercolor, Watersound, Roseberry Beach, Alice Beach, and others. That same influence has had impacts nationally and internationally as well. An important and integral element of what makes Seaside and all these other towns so special is the meticulous and careful planning regarding the mix of retail, restaurants, rental management, and to a lesser extent, office space. Choosing the right marketing mix is only half the story. Robert and Darrell, along with Pam Overa and others preceding her, have put great care into finding quality operators with heart and the same meticulous attention to detail that makes Seaside among the highest of quality destinations in the world. This careful planning and attention to detail has been emulated in other towns along scenic Thirty A. Why? Because it works. It creates very special places that visitors to South Walton embrace with enthusiasm. That translates to good business. This also translates to a very high-quality visitor experience and a very high-quality experience for those who live here. The DRI for Seaside was created many, many years ago, using a mix of downtown development that provided a targeted mix that seemed realistic at the time, but could never have anticipated what the best mix would be in real time and reality. As I understand it, what Robert and Darrell are asking regarding the equivalency matrix is to give them the latitude to continue the same planning and attention to detail to further enhance and refine the marketing mix in Seaside. This latitude would be limited by a matrix which does not permit uses where they are not already allowed. It would assure an exchange that such impacts would be of equal equivalency or less. Why would anyone want to deny that? Robert and Darrell Davis have more than exhibited their talent in creating an astounding, successful, and beloved town. These businesses are the heart of that town, and the people running them are the heartbeat. I completely trust Robert and Darrell Davis's judgment regarding any elements of the equivalency matrix that would give them the tools to further enhance and refine the town of Seaside and in turn continue to enhance and refine Thirty A in Walton County. After all these years, I can say with certainty that I trust Robert and Darrell's instincts, talent, and commitment to do what is right and best for Seaside and the broader community. I ask that you fully support the approval of the Seaside equivalency matrix. Very best, Dave Rochkob.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Yes, sir. Jay?
My name is Rick Helfand, I'm the chairman of...
Sorry. I caught you somewhere now. What was his name again?
Rick Helfand, and I'm the chairman of the Seaside School Foundation. I've not been sworn in, I'm sorry.
Uh, would you raise your hand? Do you swear or affirm that somebody will provide support to this?
Yes. So, uh, I, I just wanted to speak up on behalf of, of the Davises for what they've done for the school over the years. As most of you know, we've been doing a fundraiser and, um, and to raise funds for the school. And, um, we've become one of the best schools out of the over three thousand public schools in the state of Florida for about the last twenty years, and we're consistently ranked in the top fifteen to twenty in the state. And without Robert's generous donation of the land that he's given us, and I thank you very much for your support of the school over the years also. But, um, you know, we're, we're working to try to continue that effort with, uh, with Robert and, uh, and with the, with the community here in rel, in relationship to putting in a culinary school and a music program and things that will ultimately make this school even better than what it is today. And, uh, without the fact that this equivalency matrix, which I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an engineer, so I don't understand all of this stuff, but, um, it certainly has helped the school out and has been hugely successful for the, uh, the children in this community. So, um, I appreciate what he's done, and, and I think the equivalency matrix has certainly helped us get the addition that we are getting ready to build today. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comment? Seeing none, close the public comment section. Mr. Hunter, you're up for rebuttal.
Thank you. I did have a few questions for Mr. Oliver, uh, Chair.
Call Mr. Oliver back.
You want me to get up there with him?
No, you can do it from there if you got a mic.
Thank you. So, so Mr. Oliver, in your, uh, thank you for coming back up. By the way, Mr. Oliver's one of the highest-regarded transportation engineers in Florida, particularly working on large projects, and I acknowledge that and appreciate, uh, his expertise on these issues. The, the, when you introduced yourself, you spoke about how many... When you introduced yourself, you spoke about how many DRI projects you had worked on, and I didn't write down that number. Could you- do you remember just roughly? Give me an estimate.
Sure. Forty-seven. Would you like the list?
No, I don't need the list.
Right over there, forty-seven.
I knew it was a lot. And of those forty-seven, you were the transportation planner, engineer for the projects. Was that basically your role?
Yeah, I was probably the transportation planner and engineer who did the analyses for probably about eighty to eighty-five percent of them. There were some that I got involved in as a reviewer on behalf of agencies.
Got it. And of the, let's say, the roughly forty then that you were responsible as the transportation planner, how many of those forty DRIs had an equivalency matrix within them when they were approved?
Well, usually the matrices came in later because the idea came along after I had been in the practice for several years. I would say maybe a quarter of them at least.
Okay. And of that quarter, those matrices were adopted based upon transportation assumptions that went into that matrix, correct?
Yes, to some extent, yes. I mean, if information was available in terms of ground counts or field validation, that information was incorporated as.
But it's accurate to say that in you helping develop those matrices, your data that you used to do that were models based off how traffic would grow into the future, and then the matrix was based upon that, correct?
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. So if I could, I'd like Mr. Weatherall to get up real quickly and address some of the engineering points that Mr. Oliver made, and then I'll close real quickly, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you again. As I mentioned before, the focus was going to be on parking and traffic, and it was exactly that. And the interesting thing is that we provided our information ahead of time. It was reviewed, it was discussed here today on what we're focusing on, which is the matrix. And the thing I want to go back to is, in the matrix I showed to you all, we looked at four different components from an infrastructure perspective. And there's a reason for that. Parking and transportation isn't the controlling factor in many of those categories. That's important to note. The most restrictive are the other two categories. That's an important component. So when you talk about this, we're focusing on the rearview mirror of the existing conditions and only two of the four components that we're looking at from a matrix perspective. We provided all that, we allowed it to be reviewed ahead of time. Today, I tried to take notes as quickly as you all were probably trying to take notes as well. There was no transparency in the methodology. I don't know much about the data other than what was presented today. It was difficult to follow. It was in the peak season. This is June. If you look at all of the data out there, June is the peak of the peak. That's important to understand when you talk about transportation. The other thing about it was, he talked about cordoning off in the peak hour generator. In the industry, we don't typically talk about generator. We don't talk about the peak hour generating of an office complex, because that's a very different component than the peak hour of a church. Church is on a Sunday morning, an office complex is five in the afternoon. So when you start to cordon this off and you talk about the peak that is experienced in Sandeston, we need to- or Seaside, we need to look at what this means as it relates to the adjacent street traffic out there. Adjacent street being Thirty A. And the reason I bring that up, the Regional Planning Council, through the TPO, Okaloosa Walton TPO, as well as Walton County in their 2016 study, have come up with numbers on Thirty A that just aren't in line with the information you heard today. A thousand trips in the peak hour? Well, that far exceeds what's in the study that was completed by the Regional Planning Council through their congestion management process plan, as well as is presented in the 2016 study completed by Walton County. The other part about it is, it was noted that there were congestion that could not be mitigated. That's not what that study said. The 2016 study said, actually, the LOSC is what's experienced out there when you look at it. The other part that it noted was, and it said it in bold print, "The development that it was projected in 2001 has not developed from an impact perspective at the same level that was committed." That's an important part when you start to look at Thirty A and you start to talk about all of this. So again, those are some of the kind of key points. Transparency and understanding of the methodology. We were clearly transparent and put the methodology out there. I'm not real clear on what was done, other than it was cordoned off and it was observed. Without looking at that, it's hard to even say what was going on from a rearview mirror perspective. So again, the idea is, we don't necessarily- if we build out of the parking and the vehicle congestion as it stands today, what's to stop more parking and vehicle congestion from coming five years down the road? The idea is that congestion will drive people to get out of their cars. Gary teed up another important part about parking. Parking is another component of what I do as a transportation engineer. Nobody is building parking today without the concept of being able to convert that to developable space, whether you're talking about structured parking or whether you're talking about surface lots. The idea is that you want to be able to convert that in the urban environment to development in the coming years, and the reason being is because just what Gary said, the demand is not going to be there in the built and urban environment in years to come because of the changes in transportation. People of the younger generation are happy to get out of their car. They're happy to get in an Uber. They're happy to see the technologies coming that are changing the way that we go about driving. And so what has been the case for the past thirty years is likely not to be the case for the coming thirty years. So as we talk about the conditions today, we have to understand that. But again, the equivalency matrix is a tool that is being used to look at entitlements. Us as engineers like to talk about the things we're most comfortable with, which is transportation or other types of infrastructure. But the reality of it is, that is just a mechanism being used for the conversion. The reality of it is, is what we're talking about, is the development has entitlements that are in place. Not trips, not solid waste, not water and sewer. They're entitlements. So again, just wanted to hit on those few things.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Commissioners, and I appreciate your indulgence today of all this engineering talk and focus on admittedly a complicated design of a matrix. I think the implementation of it is simple, and I hope that came through in our explanation. Let me clean up a few items on this mapping issue, because I've seen a lot of emails directed to you all that were- that raise that as concern. We provided, in our application, a map that shows the property that Seaside Community Development Corporation owns. No one has an issue with that map. This process that we're asking about today is not asking anyone to change any maps. I mean, the maps are the one- we don't own- we're not getting the right to do anything on property we don't control before this matrix application came in front of you, and I just want to make that clear. And I think, just for Mr. Smolker's sake and the sake of his clients, I want that on the record. We're not trying to play with the maps. The issue with the maps was a consequence, I think, of the county's mapping technology when they generated the staff report. And if we need to substitute a different map, just so the report is clean at the end, we've provided that, and I'm content with that. Second point. The parcel that's external to the DRI, we were identifying that as property owned by Mr. Davis and SCDC, but by no means were we asking for this matrix or anything related to the DRI to be applicable to that property. And just so that's on the record and that's clear, I don't think anyone- that wasn't intended to provide or create confusion. Let me address legally a few items that Mr. Smolker raised. If my client were his client, I- because I know him so well, I can promise you that he'd have been up here for an hour telling you how wrong he was in his explanation that we don't have the right to proceed with vested entitlements. And I can promise you that if any local government took that position adverse to a client of his, they would find themselves in a court fighting that very issue, against a very good lawyer. And so I just find it ironic to hear my friend, Mr. Smolker, up here today suggesting vested entitlements in a DRI context are not indeed vested. They are absolutely vested. Nobody's ever, from a county perspective, ever questioned that. And I think you could ask your own attorney that issue, and she would, I presume, without ever talking to her about this, concur with me. Second point. You don't have authority to amend an EBOA is ridiculous. I mean, the EBOAs were acknowledged in the revision of Three Eighty Point Oh Six this past legislative session. It may not surprise some of you to know that I wrote the revision to Three Eighty Point Oh Six that we're now talking about. Nobody else in this room wrote it. I wrote it. It got passed by the legislature. It protected existing, essentially built-out agreements. It then recognized that any changes to any DRI in Florida from henceforth, from July first of this year, because that's when that bill became effective, going forward, were under your control, the control of local governments. So to suggest you don't have the authority to modify agreements that you entered into related to the DRI is not supported in the law. Prior law that existed before the new law went into effect, or the new law, which delegates a hundred percent of that authority to the local government, the state's out of it. And you have absolute authority to modify or not modify, if that's what you chose with regard to this project. I think my closing point, actually, let me clean up one other item. Mr. Smolker cleverly grasped upon me saying, "We're not up here with a specific purpose with this matrix, and therefore we don't need it." If we didn't need it, we wouldn't be asking for it. I think the need is one that recognizes going forward in time, there are going to be modifications, exchanges, the need to make decisions with this project and the remaining entitlements that are likely different than what that's- those hard-line remaining entitlements reflect. A good example of that, and Mr. Helfand reminded me of it when he came up here and spoke on behalf of the school, is the school. I don't remember exactly. Pull it up real quick. But let's say there's roughly fifteen- nineteen thousand, I believe, is the number of civic square feet left, maybe less than that, in the project. Mr. Davis, my client, SCDC, has every intention of building a town hall for Seaside. That has always been part of the vision, there'd be a town hall, where the town council, who's up here opposing us today, would have an opportunity to meet. We're not going to make any money off of a town hall. It's just a developer who has tremendous pride in a community that he helped develop, finishing that vision. And that's going to require civic square footage. The school, who you approved right before we came up, needs roughly fifteen thousand square feet of civic space in order to do- to enlarge the school. Both cannot happen absent this matrix. The school will not happen absent this matrix. So the one thing that I do know that is on the horizon that will demand the use of an equivalency matrix is not more restaurants, not more commercial, not more houses, not any of those other things that make a developer money. It's a town hall and a school expansion. And so the matrix would be utilized for that purpose, to create more civic space within that community. Now, the folks who spoke against this may not like that, because they may think it creates more parking, or they may demand or creates more transportation demand. But what we've lost focus on in this entire conversation, and I told you we would when I was up here earlier, I told you this was going to happen. We're going to hear complaints about parking and complaints about traffic. I concede it. I mean, we all know that- look at the pictures I showed you of the development of this corridor. There are more people and more cars there than in nineteen eighty-five when Seaside got created, or in 2001 when Seaside got amended the last time. But that doesn't preclude my client from doing anything he has left in that bundle of entitlements that I put up on the screen. And the point of this matrix is not, and nobody's questioned it, the point of this matrix is not one bit of use of those entitlements in the form they're presented or in an exchange format worsens the conditions in any respect. So we've got a right to build what we've got a right to build, and it's going to create more cars, and it's likely to create, unless Uber's driving us all around in cars that have no drivers in them, and it's going to create the demand for more parking. This matrix doesn't worsen that in any respect. And your county engineer, forget Mr. Weatherall and forget Mr. Oliver, because guess what? They got paid by that group, and he got paid by my group. So I know you're shocked to know they disagree with each other. But your county engineer got paid by you, and your county engineer says this matrix is acceptable to them. They reviewed it, independent of either of their inputs, and that was their conclusion. And your county planning staff reviewed this from the standpoint of, "Does this comply with our comprehensive plan?" And they agreed that it did. And by the way, I've submitted a report that they assumed in the record of Mr. Metcalf that's- that, I know you're shocked, disagrees with the conclusions that they have reached on whether or not this is consistent with the comp plan or not. But just so it's clear for you all, there are conclusions in your record that say the comp plan and the land development code is consistent with what's being asked for. But put aside the paid experts and look at your staff report. And the people that you employed to evaluate this concluded that this was okay, that this made sense, and that this, from an engineering perspective, worked, and that this, from a planning perspective, worked. And so I would ask you to approve the matrix. We are not asking you to allow us to do something that worsens conditions. The matrix is intended to prevent against that, and I believe we've established that it does, and more important than that, the people that you rely upon, independent of us, have agreed with us on that point. We're happy to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, I know you all, this has been a long discussion. We appreciate you listening to us, and thank you for your consideration.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes, sir.
You know, I know the- this doesn't approve anything being built. This approves the right to come before this board, this planning department, our planning commission, our engineers, to, in the future, have a chance to build something. You do understand that if this does pass, that anything that has to be built, or is going to be built, you're going to have to come up with a parking plan. And, you know, just because your overall parking spaces can be moved around, there's going to have to be, if you're building, as the chairman said, up there on those two front lots, you're going to have to have some type of parking plan that meets our comp plan and our code. So I understand this is not approving or disapproving what's in the future. This is just giving you the right to move your entitlements from one area to the next, like from residential to commercial or-
Not the location.
Not the location. Not the location. I understand that. But like on the circle, there is a bad parking problem. And that's something I want you and your client to understand, that there's- that's going to have to be dealt with in the future if this board chooses to pass this. And I know you understand that, but I'm just putting it on the record.
Yes, sir. We do. We absolutely understand any future development order has to comply with their code and probably come back in front of this board for approval, depending upon the level of the development order. But, you know, real quickly, comment on that circle and your point. I mean, one thing that's changed over time that I don't think anyone envisioned is, you've got this tremendously successful corridor, Thirty A, that has really transformed Walton County in a twenty, thirty-year period. And so people want to be here, and they come here in large numbers. And when they do, they often come with three, four, or five vehicles and are all occupying one house. And so we know, because we own the parking and the commercial area around that town square, that what happens a lot of times, there aren't locations in front of each of those homes to park five vehicles, or for that matter, three vehicles. And so they go park their cars in those parking spaces that there's no need to remember. It's just free parking, and there's no- you don't have to have a sticker or something to stay there. And they go park their cars there for a week and have the other two cars back at the house, and they're paying ten or fifteen thousand dollars a week to rent. And so guess what? It occupies the parking spaces. We get it. I mean, there's no doubt that there is a parking challenge there, that Mr. Davis and Seaside Community Development Corporation are looking for ways to solve. It isn't easy to solve it, and I think we all acknowledge that. But it isn't all Mr. Davis's fault. I think it's a- and it isn't any individual's fault. It's just- It's just a collection of how the corridor transformed itself and how those properties became used, that, that nobody, I promise you, in nineteen eighty-five thought would happen, because if they had, we'd all been down there buying those houses and renting them out for what they get rented out for today. And, and so, I, you know, I, that's, it's, it's just a, it's just a effect of what has happened over time that, you know, we got to figure out ways to manage, there's no question. But, you know, the, the, Mr. Rothschild and others who have restaurants and businesses down there, I can assure you that if they thought their businesses were being negatively impacted in a way that they couldn't get customers to them, to their stores, or their facilities, their restaurants, their, their markets, their, uh, retail establishments, their ice cream shops, whatever they may be, they'd be lined up behind me saying, "This is a horrendous idea because we're losing customers." And we know that that's exactly the opposite that's happening. More, more, more customers are coming, but, but it, your, your point's a fair point. And we're not asking you to approve anything other than our ability to use this exchange matrix in a way that doesn't worsen conditions, understanding that every time we come before you with a, a development, we've, you've got to approve it, and we've got to meet your code.
Okay. Mr. Man, Commander, you got any?
Yes. Um, and I fully agree, uh, with Commissioner Anderson, and I understand that there is a parking and a transportation problem on, not only on Seaside, the entire thirty A. Um, you know, there's, um, hindsight's a really wonderful thing. Um, our predecessors, thirty years ago, if they had a vision of what was going to happen today, they might have made some different, um, decisions. But the fact is, we're here, and to, today, we're, we're looking at a quasi-judicial matter about whether or not you can use the equivalence matrix. It's not about transportation. It's not about parking. It's whether or not you can use the matrix to, um, move some things around. I would rather see perhaps addition to schools, that you move, uh, you know, um, an entitlement to a school, because, um, I understand that Seaside isn't one of the best. Um, there are other, I'd rather, you know, than, than say, build more houses or more condos. I'd love, um, you know, if that land could use it, well, then those be transferred that way. That's the decision that I am charged with today, um, to make that decision on that. It's a legal decision that we have to make. We can't make it on emotion, unfortunately. We can't make it on what we'd really like. We have to base it on the law and what's in front of us. And the first thing I do is look at my staff, because there's nobody finer on the face of the earth as far as staff concerned, than those two women sitting right there. And when they tell me, and I read it, the recommendation that it meets the requirements, then I believe those women. If my engineer tells me that this is, um, okay with the engineering staff, then I believe my engineer. Sorry, fellas, I don't believe even one of y'all. Y'all getting paid. Um, he's getting paid too, but he doesn't have a dog in the hunt. So, for me, I listen to staff, I listen to the engineers, and it's about the matrix today, and, and future, um, commissions will have to decide about a project. I won't be here. Um, but, uh, you know, future commissioners will have to decide if you want to, I go back to the grocery store. If you want to build a grocery store there, how are you going to provide parking, and how are you going to help transportation? But that's not the decision that I am faced with today.
I got one other question. This is not for you, Mr. Hunter, it's for our attorney. Uh, we've heard two different sides from the legal matter, and everybody here knows my opinion of attorneys. Uh, and I know Mr. Hunter does especially. Uh, but I want your opinion. Can we, Mr. Smoker says, "We don't have the legal authority to do this." Mr. Hunter says, "We do."
Right.
I want your opinion.
Yes, sir. Um, so, my opinion is we do have the authority to amend the essential built-out agreement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you all done?
All done.
Okay. I just want to make a few comments. Um, I agree with Commissioner Commander that we are here for one purpose, one purpose only, and that is to determine if the matrix is something that we want to engage in, or have, uh, applied to Seaside. Again, as we always do when we listen to these QJ items here, there's always two sides there of story, or two opinions. We have Mr. Smoker over here, he has his opinion. We have Mr. Hunter, he has his opinion. We've got legal, our, our legal staff giving an opinion. And occasionally, we have to say, "One side or the other is wrong," or we're going to vote against one side or the other, and we end up in court. Attorneys love to go to court, because that's, they get, those are billable hours. But it's a possibility, it'll, it could, depending on whatever action comes today, end up in court, one side or the other's going to challenge it. And we are not attorneys. We have to depend on the best evidence that we can get and understanding from our legal and our staff and our, uh, Public Works Department. I think all of us in this room would agree that Seaside, at the present time, is overburdened with traffic and parking issues. I understand from Mr. Hunter's side, there's so many parking spots available out there. But I agree with Commissioner Anderson over here that if there's some future DO for any of those vacant parcels right now, if I'm still here, then I'm going to expect there'd be additional parking put out there to accommodate any of that increase. It just makes common sense. You don't go build a commercial store or business or whatever and not have parking in front of it. It just don't make sense. You already hearing from some of the ladies out here, people can't find a parking spot as is, and they having to drive through the residential area and try and find a place to stop. I would have liked to have on Mr. Hunter's side a little bit more, uh, to, uh, in reference to the four things I believe you all used, is, uh, parking, solid waste, water and sewer, and trip generation, uh, used as far as determining your matrix, it would have been focused more towards traffic and parking. Uh, that's the problem right now. I don't think there's a problem with sewer or, or stormwater runoff or any of that. I think it's just those two areas, and I, I wanted a little bit more of that. But those are my comments. We have two different, we have this side and that side as far as, uh, the traffic and the parking presented to us, and we got set here today as non-engineers, non-attorneys, and make a decision. And as I, as previously said by the board, we are here to look at is whether this matrix meets the comp, the code, and the statute. So, with that said...
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, we approve the, um, request.
I'll second it.
You got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you all for everything. I believe that's the end of it, so we'll stand adjourned.